This is Smith to approve tonight's agenda. Seconded by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to old business. Conditional rezoning Southeast Corner 22 and Garfield. Located on the southeast corner of 22 Mile Road and Garfield Road. Section 22. Majid Kozza, and I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong. Petitioner. Permanent parcel number 0829-100001. And one, oh, 0829-100019. And 0829-1000021. And finally, 0829-1000022. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. I'm sure you all remember this as it was on your last agenda. You did recommend approval to the Township Board for this item. However, they, they did make some changes with regards to the options for a drive-through and how many, or, or, excuse me, with regards to options for a car wash and the number of drive-throughs. You may recall that they offered mid-meeting to, to reduce that number down to one, but keep the option for a drive-through. So they did come back to us and, and discuss a little bit further and, and have a new set of conditions that they're offering that we feel, staff feels, makes it a little bit more palatable to, to have a, a drive-through and a, and a car wash in addition. So they are still requesting to entire, to rezone the entire thing conditionally to flex use. And, and again, they, they made changes. You, you saw this a couple of weeks ago. So going through those changes, the drive-through uses would be limited to two, which is what they asked for originally, and that would include a, a car wash if one is developed. Doesn't mean they have to develop a car wash, it just gives them that option. But we put some conditions in there, if they did develop the car wash. It shall not front on Garfield. It would, it would front on 22 Mile. Would maintain a 45-foot landscape buffer from residentially-zoned properties. That buffer would contain a mixture of landscaping and evergreen trees and must be approved by the Planning Condition, Commission. Any vacuums that might be a part of a car wash would be placed so that they are on the opposite side of the building as any residential uses nearby to help with the sound. And, and though there's another condition further on that talks about them meeting all aspects of the Township ordinance, we did want to make a, a point to show that their vacuums and blowers would still be subject to the Township noise ordinance. They kept the other conditions that you see here, one of which i- is the six-foot masonry wall. So keeping in mind that there's a 45-foot buffer, there's also a wall that would be there as well. So with these revisions, a- and here's their, their list of permitted uses, which is the same as what you saw previously. With that, at this time, staff is in support of this conditional rezoning agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. All right, petitioner here. Come on up to the chair there and state your name and address for the record, please.
Bob Kirk, 19-500 Hall Road, Plitton Township. With me is Louis Ciotti.
Louis Ciotti, Landmark Commercial, 30-500 Northwestern Highway, Farmington Hills.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
We're back again.
Yep. Do you have anything you'd like to add from Mr. Box's report?
Just a little background on what, what's going on here. There's six different parcels we're trying to assemble. We haven't closed on any of them yet to make this work. We, we need to get this approved as we can, think we can develop it. But this would be good for the township because you could limit your access. As it stands now, you might be able to get four uses on those properties with all separate accesses. So we're trying to do a unified development. It's expensive to assemble properties. We're willing to do it. Actually, this buyer owns the northwest corner also. So he's looking for some continuity and for some proper development along the way. We, after the last meeting, we talked to him and then met with Josh. We came up with this, this new proposal and request that you consider it.
Okay, Commissioners. Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Box, probably walk a sort again. When you say "drive-through," so typically, let's say there were, there was a car wash there. Then after that, what would it be? Maybe a fast food?
Most likely. I mean, again, I would defer to these guys, but most likely it would be some sort of a, a fast food use. I mean, anything that's a drive-through would be permitted. So it, in theory, it could be a bank or a credit union. It could be a, a drive-through, dry cleaners. I mean, anything that you drive your vehicle through.
Drive-through, we see.
That counts as a drive-through.
Yeah, okay. So to, where would you want, if, if they come back with a car wash, where would you want to see it? Like, your ideal spot on?
Where would we want to see it? Well, I, I think, again, in meeting with these folks, ideally, it would be fronting on 22 Mile, which is a condition that's in there. It cannot front on Garfield. And would be set away from the residence, which is the other conditions that they've added, the, the 45-foot landscape buffer with a wall. And, and I think what, to his point, assembling these properties, they can share a drive access to the roadway. In working with neighboring corners, they can align some of those, most likely, and, and make this intersection function with both commercial and, and multiple corners as well as the amount of traffic that goes through the area.
Is there any way that if, we don't know, we're speculating, a car wash comes? Because we're giving them approval for a car wash, that they could put the exit of a car wash when they come out towards the west? Because that's where the noise is when they're exiting and all the, them high-powered fans come on. It, it don't seem like there's a lot of noise going into a car wash. Because you, because you, that's internal motors and stuff running and spray, and that don't, to me, that don't seem loud. But my concern would be if, if the car wash was exiting towards the east, then all that noise would be blasting out there.
Sure.
Would that, could that be something we can consider?
I think we would want, we would want it to exit either to the north or to the west.
Okay.
I think to the north is still going to put any sound towards the roadway, which already has a lot of ambient noise.
Yeah.
And, and you're right, to the west would put it towards, you know, a fuel station or whatever they develop on the hard corner there and, and away from residence.
Because, as we all know, they use these high-powered fans to blow the water off, and them create a lot of noise.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
If I make a comment? That's why we left that 45 feet on one side, and then originally, we called it just a buffer, and Josh made certain it's that landscape buffer. So if we need to put more evergreens or pines, or I did a firestorm, I put a little wing wall on that side coming out. So there's things we can do at the planning, at the site plan.
Yeah. Because we got to remember that the residents are still there, so we got to coexist with them. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could. Mr. Box, they mentioned the 45-foot landscape buffer. Without this in the conditional rezoning, what would the distance be that they would have, they would have to maintain?
I think there's an eight-foot green belt, as long as the wall is built.
So the building, a car wash building could be eight feet from, from the property line?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, sir. They've got a little confused. They, they're, you said what, had, could be eight foot, but they have to, they're agreeing to 45 foot.
That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone? All right, well, then I need a motion to open this item to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Folks, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and talk about the 22 Mile and Garfield development and the conditional rezoning, please come up to the podium, and you'll have four minutes to speak. You give us your name and address, and if there's more than one, we'll take all of your comments and your questions and save them to the end, and then we'll ask Mr. Box to comment. So is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? Anyone? Okay. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion passes. All right, if there are no other comments.
Yep. I did have, I actually did have one question that occurred to me, might go to Mr. O'Loa. So in this particular item, we saw this last meeting. We had a recommendation request for us. We made a recommendation, we voted on it. The item was closed out. I'm assuming that it had been noticed before it got to us. What's our requirements as far as noticing on a secondary meeting when we, I, I know when we table, that goes from the first notification, but how does that work when we essentially closed out the item with a motion?
Are you talking about public notice?
Yes.
This is noticed in accordance with any meeting, correct?
Yeah, so it was noticed for the last meeting. It was recommended for approval to the Township Board. Township Board did hear the item and referred it back to Planning Commission at this specific meeting. So the chain of, of the notice.
The notice would be from the last meeting.
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Do we have a motion? All right. Then I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the conditional rezoning for the southeast corner of 22 Mile and Garfield. Located on the southeast corner of 22 and Garfield, section 22. Should I go through all the permanent parcels, Mr. Box? Should do it, probably.
You probably should, yes.
Yeah, okay. Permanent parcel 0829-10001. And 0829-1000022.
I'll support your motion.
Okay, motion by myself, seconded by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Um, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes, you native.
Very much.
All right. Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. New business. Revised landscape plan to PUD, General Design Plan Hartford PUD. Located on the southeast corner of 24 Mile Road and Card. Section 14, MJC Hartford Village LLC. Petitioner, they're the petitioner. Permanent parcel number 0814151002. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. As you saw in your packet, this is a very minor modification. This is something that typically we would probably do through a technical change process. However, this is, you know, the developers are no longer the owner of the property. The, the land is owned by the HOA, so we felt it was appropriate to have a public hearing. Let, let the residents be aware of this. So as you see on the screen there, you can see my cursor here, this drawing is actually angled so that north is on the left-hand side, whereas the aerial north is, is to the top. But the area in question is this small area adjacent to the roadway and adjacent to their final building. So a berm was, was constructed, this, this site is mostly built out at this point, and a berm was constructed without formal approval, and at this point, they're just asking for approval on the site conditions for that. So again, as you see here, they've got some landscaping on top of the berm, and the, the drawing in the corner. And here's a few photos of what that looks like in actuality. Again, staff is, is in support of this. It's a very minor item. We just wanted to make sure that the public did get the proper notice and have, have a chance to come and speak about it.
Okay. Petitioner here? Okay, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shamik Tribathy, 46600 Romeo Plank, Macomb, Michigan. I'm a consulting engineer for the MJC.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, as just mentioned, I think that berm was placed along with tree to make it look much better coming from that side, but other than that, it was not in the plan, so.
All right, fair enough. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, to Josh. So this was put in place by the last developer. MJC now owns, controls the property, and they're looking to move forward, but it's not according to the plan as it stands.
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything? Anybody else? All right, fair enough. At this time, let's open this item to the public with a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly, seconded by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Anybody who would like to come and talk about the berm? Now's the time. Anyone? This is a public hearing. Anyone? Okay. Motion to close?
So moved.
Mister, by Mr. Oliver?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right. Do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, just a verification to Mr. Box's recommendation approval. This is to be a recommendation?
I think this is actually a recommendation. I did tell Mr. Hardy before the meeting that this is, you were the final say, but this is their general design plan, so this does go to the board.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, then I would make a motion to recommend approval of the revised landscape plan for the PUD for Hartford, which would be 0814151002, due to the fact that this increases the sound buffering between this parcel and the property, or the, the Elon Estate subdivision, and, and that it meets all of our other qualifications, specifications.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield. I'll second that. Mr. Bentley, would you call the roll?
I will. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
And Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Special land use. The next item. Regency Sports Center, located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, a quarter mile west of Romeo Plank Road. Section 17. Hoco Group LLC. Petitioner. Permanent parcels 0817344027. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. We've seen a few of these in, in the past few months, where it's an indoor sports facility in the industrial zone properties. And again, they are allowed should they be granted as special land use. So this one in particular, I believe they're going to be conducting some soccer trainings and possibly some games. And the site is at the end of Regency Center Drive, which is unit 27. They have their hours of operation listed here. That was in your packet as well. And I, I did want to note that the petitioner did indicate that there will be games on, on a few weekends. So again, the proposed location, as you see here, is building one. There's a fair amount of parking around it. Again, this is an industrial subdivision. Most of the uses here are weekday, you know, eight to, eight to five type uses. So this one would be different than that, so they wouldn't necessarily be competing all that much for, for parking or other amenities. The criteria for the special land use, I'm sure you're all very familiar with these. We've been through a number of them, but there are eight of them. So it shall be of such location size and character that it will be harmonious and with orderly development in the surrounding neighborhoods. I don't think this is going to be developed and, and prohibit a neighboring property from developing or, or even want, make a neighboring property undesirable. This is an interior build-out for a sports operation. Proposed use of such nature that the vehicular and pedestrian traffic should not be more hazardous than is normal. Again, there's 190 parking spaces available for all three buildings. I did want to point out, at the previously approved location, you see there in red, we did approve a similar activity in this complex. I believe that was the Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu gym in that location. Again, that's only, that's much smaller. It appears that they're only taking two units there, and I'll defer to the applicant here, but I think based on what they put in their letter, this new operation would be the entire building. But I'm sure they can comment on that when they get up here. So again, the, the primary thing that you're going to be looking at this evening is if you feel parking is going to be an issue. The proposed use shall be designed with respect to location size and intensity. Again, they're not necessarily competing with other industrial uses. They're not producing any noise or noxious, you know, dust, fumes. It's all internal to the site. The proposed use shall be at location of height of buildings, of structures that are appropriate in the area. I don't believe this building is constructed yet, but what they're showing, as, with their drawings, this would fit with the, the character of the neighborhood. Proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the economic aspects of adjacent lands, not really applicable here. Also not applicable would be necessity for public convenience at the proposed location. Proposed use is so designed, located, and planned that it shall be operated in a manner that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. Again, this is all interior. This is not going to affect really anybody outside of what's going on into, inside of the building and in the roadways leading up to the building. Proposed use shall not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood within which it is located. Again, it's an industrial area, so really, parking is the only thing that may be of concern. It, it's a neighborhood, it's, it's an industrial development that's built to handle much larger operations than, than this, much more intense operations than this. Leoni Drive is, is much wider than a, a standard drive that you'd see in your, your neighborhood. So again, staff is, is in support of this, contingent upon the Planning Commission determining that parking is acceptable.
Okay. Petitioner? Are you in the audience? Come on up. Names and addresses for the record, please.
Giovanni Morrow from Morrow Engineering. 48657 Hayes Road, Shelby Township, 48315.
Okay.
Gasper Monaco from the Hoco Group. 48657 Hayes Road, Shelby Township.
Okay. And yeah, get the mic to your mouth there for me.
Jeff Hodson, 401 Woodward Avenue, Rochester, Michigan.
Okay.
With the Nationals group.
Gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to add to Mr. Box's report?
Not much. Thank you, Josh, for that. The...
Get a little closer to the mic for me.
Start with that. Yeah, the proposed use is, is like you said, it's approximately about a 50,000 square-foot building. The intention is for the, excuse me, the soccer club, which they do athletic sports training to take the entire building for that use. It's a, it's a five-acre parcel in its entirety. The two buildings, about 20,000 square feet each, you see to the east side, and then the bigger buildings, about 50,000 square feet. We did the engineering design on it, Morrow Engineering. There's a landscape wall, six-foot high on the north side, with a landscape buffer on the north side, just for all the site planning and approvals. And yeah, it's on Regency Center Drive, all the way to the north.
That's correct.
Then we'll, let's open it to the Commissioners. Mr. Bentley?
I just have a few. Just for clarification, this is a special land use, it's not site plan approval or anything, so.
That's correct.
From what I, I saw on the plans that were in the packet, the plans have changed for, for the buildings, the size and such, but.
What's currently on your screen is, is the, that's not the correct plan.
That's correct.
Yeah, if you look, there's parking in the rear of the building. Josh, maybe I was up first.
There was another plan within our packet that was different than this.
Yes, that's correct.
My question would be, timing-wise, per the document that identified the occupancy, and I believe you totaled that for building number, for building number one, I guess it would be, that you needed at least 128 parking spots because of people in the office, and, and then if two teams are within the building, plus whoever their visitors are, each of the team members. But unless that whole lot is completed and the parking is provided for the other two buildings, I think you'd have to stretch out your parking. What is the intent of when you would occupy the building? And is that after all?
The other two buildings are up.
Okay. But all the parking and everything would be complete?
The second building, the, the one in the middle, is getting, we just started that one. We'll, we'll have that parking lot done in the springtime.
Okay.
So that, you know.
So you'll have plenty of parking?
Yes, correct.
And a Saturday or what have you, when your big crowds come?
Yeah.
Normally, there would only be one team involved, except for when you have games?
Yeah, during the week, around four o'clock, when the kids get out of school, they'll come for practice. That location will have a lot of our older kids, so most of them will, you know, like mid-range to older, they'll be getting dropped off. At any time, you probably have 40 to 60 players in there at one time, which, there's plenty of parking for that, for those players. Obviously, on the weekend, when there is a, a game going on there, there will be, if, parking will be, you know, there's, my opinion, there's still plenty of parking that will be there for a game that's going on.
How many teams would be competing at one time, you say?
The, the most would be four at one time for a game.
Four teams?
Four youth teams, like 10 players on a team. That would be, that would be the max.
Okay, so that's, that's more than what you had on your plan. You had a...
We had, it's one field, but they, they'll divide it up to, younger kids will take a smaller chunk of the field, depending on, you know, less players, stuff like that.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you for that clarification. Another, just housekeeping. Josh, is the parcel number ending in 027, or is it 109? The plans show 109. Three of the plans. Another plan, sheet one of one, shows it as 027. We need to know what we're, which one we're approving.
I believe it's the 027.
It's 27, I believe.
027? Okay, so the 109, which is on all five of the other sheets, is incorrect then, correct?
Yeah, that might be referencing the, the original parent parcel before this development was, was split.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that clarification. And then lighting, on your lighting plan, I know this is not a site plan approval, but just, just an observation, there's no lighting for the, for the north line of parking and, and, I mean, there's zero-foot candles, and I, I don't think that's...
That will, that will be addressed. We'll probably, you know, we'll work with the township, and that will for sure be redressed.
Yeah, I, I just thought of bringing it up.
Okay.
I think that was all I had. I appreciate your, your clarifications.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Is this an, do you have an existing business like this going on, or is this all startup?
Uh, yes, we have an existing business, and we have the 20, the one at 23 and Hayes there, the Premier Sports Center.
Okay.
We, we sort of control the inside with tons of soccer, and as Macomb County is growing, we, we can't, we can't fit all the kids in this, in that place, so we need another, we need another building to, to make sure these kids have a place to play.
Okay. How long's the practices last?
Hour and a half.
Okay, do, and most of them drop off, or do people stay?
For the 23 Mile one, most, there, a lot of the young kids are there, or older kids, actually, we, we have to send them out to Total Soccer, Fraser, and other locations.[1790.33] and other locations, so I would, we need a location near here for our older kids that they can go there and that's when the parents usually drop them off, because the kids are twelve, fourteen, high school age, so. But the one on twenty-three mile is more for our our younger, our younger parents.
How how long's the games last?
One hour.
One hour, okay. And you're putting metal stands in there for seating?
Bleachers, possibly.
Bleachers, yeah.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Yeah, they're the yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Question, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Oliver, I'm sorry. Petitioner, this is primarily for soccer?
Yes.
Will it ever be used for any other sport, football practice, or?
Possibly.
Okay. But separately, you would do that if you opted to go that route? You couldn't hardly have, how would you do that?
Well, you have, you know, there's so many, you know, we probably wouldn't do baseball in there. We wouldn't do anything, you know, something like a flag football or, you know, people just need an area with turf that they can go practice on, especially, you know, November to nowadays till basically May. So it, our business is pretty much all soccer, but if someone came around and wanted to do some small sided flag football, maybe, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, we're we're here to help the the community and what what the community needs as well.
Okay. And of course, parking would be always your objective?
Yes, that, you know, the the weekends is when you'd have any type of games that would go on, and there would be, should be between the parcels, should be plenty of parking on on the weekends for that.
And and when you do have a game, is there going to be bleachers or seating area inside the building?
Yes, I mean, we'll have some, we'll have, you know, bleachers.
People bring chairs, people stand, they're quick games, they're one hour.
And and how many people show up usually? Again, I'm going after parking. I just want to make sure we got enough parking.
You know, depending on a bit, you know, that field's set up for not a full, like soccer is eleven versus eleven. That field is set up for nine versus nine, so you would have potentially, you know, twelve on each team, so you'd have twenty-four players and then, you know, the parents that come of those twenty-four players and maybe grandparents or, you know, someone that comes in town. Probably, yeah.
Fifty, okay. And then, do you have adequate restrooms for all those people?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but we will.
You you will, you.
Yeah, that will be.
Right, because I understand this.
We haven't, we haven't done any, this is speculative right now. We haven't done interior building plans.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver, Mr. Tuckfield.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, to Mr. Box, maybe to Mr. Aloya. We see so typically special land uses in conjunction with a site plan that it's hard for me, I guess mentally here, to be sorting out what I'm looking at and what I'm not. Can you give us a little bit of a primer on that, just?
Yeah, so this site had had a site plan, I I believe, that was already approved, so it's it's based, you're looking at that building and that that site plan. Should they decide to change the building, they they may revise that, depending on if it's a very minor change. It could be a technical change, or it could end up back in front of you.
So so things like Mr. Bentley, I think, mentioned foot candles on the back, that would typically, I would think, be something that we'd look at.
At the site plan level, yes.
So in this case, it's already been approved with a different layout.
Correct.
Is it pertinent relative to safety, to the light, or to the to the to the to the use? Like, is, I guess I'm struggling to make sure that I separate the things we should look at and we shouldn't.
Sure, so you do have the purview to look at the health, safety, and welfare of of pedestrian travel. Again, keeping in mind that just to the north of this is a residential development, so I think when the site was developed, there there was some intention to 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 keep the lights down and and not interfere with that use.
I'm assuming because it is so low in the back that at some point that they will come back and want to put lights in. If that happens, in the meantime, is that a site plan change, or does that just go with the technical, or how does that work?
It depends on where they put the lights. If they're building mounted, they would probably just work through the building department. If they're actually putting something on the site and changing the site plan, then it could be, if it's just a light, it would most likely be a technical change. If it's, you know, an array of lights that we had an issue with, we may bring it back to the planning commission.
Okay. And the, and on a wall pack or something of that nature, they would still have to maintain our our foot candle.
Correct.
Outside the, okay. It was mentioned, I believe, the possibility of seating inside. That's something we typically ask about whenever there's a sports use. I know we have some references to it in a couple of our ordinances. But I'm trying to remember, is the reference only referring to whether or not it's a special land use or not? Or what is, how how are, how are grandstands treated? I do not recall.
I I would assume anything they're going to use is going to be portable, so it's not a permanent structure anyways. They're just providing seating for spectators, for moms and dads to watch their kids play soccer, so. I it's not a permanent structure. I don't think it's really anything that would concern us.
Okay, all right, very good. And then just Mr. Aloya, obviously, had questions on difference between a special land use and a site plan. Anything that you would want us to keep track of or be careful of as we're going through it?
No, I think, I think if, you know, there's any conditions that you're, that you would impose as part of the special land use, now's the time to discuss that.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question. You mentioned the twenty-three and Hayes facility. How does yours, size wise, square footage wise, compare?
That one is above fifteen, maybe eighteen thousand square feet bigger than than this proposed site here.
Okay, there's, there's other businesses as well there. There's golf, there's there's four or five other businesses in that facility.
That's right, yep. And the, that facility, do you know how many parking spaces they might have offhand, roughly? Because I see a lot of cars park out on the street.
Them and Art and Jake's, they get, it's a handful.
Yeah, exactly. So.
That facility has a lot of the young, young players, because they have extra fields for the little toddlers that this one will not have, will not have the, that's not the use for this building.
And my little granddaughter went, and there were six people watching a practice, so there were maybe three cars total. So, okay, all right. All right, at this time, I need a motion to open it to the public. So moved. Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. Is there anyone that would like to come up and and talk about the special land use for Regency Sports Center? Anyone? Okay. Are you sure? Just making sure, just double checking. All right, then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right, do we have a motion on this item, or any further questions? Or comments? Anyone? Well, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the special land use for Regency Sports Center located on twenty-three mile, quarter mile west of Romeo Plank. Section seventeen, parcel number zero eight one seven three four four zero two seven.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion by myself, seconded by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll, please.
Will do. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. All right. Next item is item eight, public comments are not agenda items. Anyone wants to come up, come up to the podium on my left and share your thoughts. Anyone? Anyone at all? Okay, well, then we'll move on. Commissioner comments? Do we have any? I have one. I would like to, and I talked to Mr. Box about this before the meeting, come up with a more specific way of if you're not going to be here. Instead of word of mouth, or, you know, hey, I'm not going to make it here, or whatever, I think we need to, and maybe we can do this when we look at the bylaws in January, whether it's an email to the chair and to Mr. Box, or a text, or whatever, just kind of an official way of making sure that that it's counted and we know that it's excused and you won't be here. So that's my thought. Any comments on that?
I think that could easily be done with an email to, as you were discussing, maybe.
Right, and and you're actually the one that gave me the idea, because you're very good about, you know, letting us know that you're not going to be here. I mean, you send the email and explain in detail and all that other kind of stuff, so. All right, so that's my comment. Any other comments? All right, then we'll move on to the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison update. Mr. Charles Oliver.
Are you talking about North Carolina?
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Probably the big, the big thing at last meeting, the the county or the park association, they're trying to obtain property along the river. So anytime that the township sees property that might not be ever developable, and if it comes up for sale, we try to at least look at it. And so now we've worked, they've worked hard on a grant that could be up to seven hundred thousand dollars to it, and and we're looking to buy two parcels of property along twenty-three mile road. So it's moving forward and out of the two parcels, if everything went good, our portion would, could be as low as a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, and it'll just keep adding and adding. Maybe, probably in my lifetime, I'll never see the pathway done, but you got to start adding these properties. And then when they get enough continuous property, then they'll put the path in. So, and and that's, that's about all of that. But on another note, I don't know if I, if I told the board that the house on twenty-three mile road next to the fire station, that is moving forward to be demolished. Okay, it could be soon. Okay, so I just want to bring the board up today. People ask me about that house and, so that's it.
Charlie, where's that property at? The county with.
Twenty-two six hundred, twenty-three mile road.
Well, I know where that is, they.
I think some of it, you you'd know it by the old Cuckoo property.
Okay.
You know, right by the river, some of that, and I think the other parcel could be right next to that. They're close in proximity, and we're looking at some other parcels and so. It'll be, it'll be a long process, but you got to obtain the land before you can do anything.
Yeah.
And what kind of items, or what kind of development? The idea is to to have a walkway next to the river. You know, if the river ever gets cleaned, you know, you you could use it for a kayak law, you know, kayaking and and basically recreation.
Sure.
Josh, do you know exactly?
Sure, I I can add some to this. This, there's actually four parcels. There's two that the county has grant funding for. They've, they've already acquired that funding, and then there's two other ones through a FEMA grant. So the the grant through the county has a match requirement that the township would have to kick in. And I believe the the way it's it's set up is if the FEMA grant comes through, that's going to actually count as our match. So we're using one grant to count as our match for the other grant. So in the end, we're actually going to get four different parcels for, as Charlie noted, it possibly, I think the worst case scenario was like a hundred and ten thousand. It it could be as low as zero, depending on how high the FEMA grant, how much they offer us for that grant. There's a parcel up on twenty-six mile, parcel on twenty-four mile that we quite often see flooding. It was, all the trees were removed a few years back, and and they've just recently replanted some some little tiny saplings that are going to take forever to grow. So that's one of the parcels, and then, as Mr. Oliver said, the Cuckoo parcels on twenty-three mile. But yes, we're we're working with the county to acquire property along the north branch of the Clinton River, put it into a conservation easement, so it will stay undeveloped forever. There are some portions that we might be able to put, you know, a small parking lot for a trailhead, or or as you said, a canoe launch or kayak launch. We we have committed to work with the county for the, to make this happen, and we started the process when we acquired the property that is now Lucido Park. So we're doing our best to to acquire property, and yes, it's going to take decades to get all this property and maybe even longer to get a pathway along it, but you got to start somewhere.
Okay, thanks, Josh. All right, nothing else?
No, that's it.
Okay. ZPA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Planning Department items, meeting next?
We do have a meeting on the seventeenth. We have a board meeting tomorrow night. We have ZBA Thursday night. It's a busy week. And then, as I said, Planning Commission on the seventeenth, so we will see you back one more time this year.
Okay, fair enough. All right, motion to adjourn? So moved. Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Sir.
Seconded, seconded by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right. Good evening and good night.